Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to City of Geneva's City Council Meeting. This is Monday, October 19th, 2015. My name is Dean Kilburg, Third Ward Alderman, and I'm standing in for Mayor Burns, who's out of town this evening. Begin the meeting with a reading of the roll. Would you please read the roll?
Mike Bruno here.
Tara Burkhardt.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Ford Malaudra. Richard Marx.
Here.
Jim Rodecky.
Here.
Mary Sino.
Here.
Tom Simonian.
Here.
Ron Singer.
Okay, if you'd please stand. Matty, would you please lead us in the pledge to the flag?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business this evening is a proclamation. For a number of years, Geneva has recognized Red Ribbon Week in October, and this evening we have a representative of Geneva High School, as well as a faculty member that's involved, been involved with the program for a number of years. We have with us Matty Hagan and Becky Furnish. I'm sure that you have some things you'd like to share with the community, and we'll like to bring you to the podium and give you some time, if you'd like.
Good evening. My name's Madison Hagan, and I would like to thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to discuss Red Ribbon Week and the importance of it. Red Ribbon Week is a remembrance of an officer that died in the line of duty, Kiki Camarino, and his family, after his death, decided to devote a week to him for bringing awareness to substance abuse. During Red Ribbon Week, we spread awareness around the whole entire city by putting up signs and ribbons all around, just to bring awareness to the substance abuse. And my experience with substance abuse, my cousin actually passed away due to overdose of substance abuse two years ago, and it was really tragic, and it's hard to deal with from day-to-day basis, but we're dealing with it, and I think it's really important to spread the awareness because it is a big issue around the world. Thank you.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate your presence here this evening and reminding the community of the importance of the theme of Red Ribbon Week as we look at our communities and the day-to-day challenges that we have with both prescription drugs, as well as illegal drugs in the Fox Valley. And I know that we continue, you continue, your efforts through Red Ribbon Week, Red Ribbon Week, to educate the community, build awareness, and I know that your activities at the high school are important, and sometimes we wonder if we're making progress, but we never should quit trying. And again, I thank you for your time this evening, and I, is there anyone with the council that'd like to comment on Red Ribbon Week? How many, Becky, how many years have we been, been involved with Red Ribbon Week here with the city and the school districts?
I've been involved with it since Mary Lou Halhardt way before I did, and it's usually important to have the city's support behind this, and I know that it's important to the teens. Matty can maybe share with you, through the SAD Club, some of the things we're talking about doing this year. The kids have been really involved in helping Lazarus House so that their parents can get the drug education they need there, and the SAD Club is talking about rebranding our SAD Club, and Matty, would you like to share a little about that?
Okay.
SAD Club is a club that stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions, and we are a volunteer club, but we also try to send students towards the right path. We give opportunities, such as babysitting for the kids, like Becky said. At the Lazarus House, we also do local 5K walks for breast cancer, or something like that, and we just basically, we like to help the community and do what we can.
Very good.
Can you talk about how we're going to try to change the name of the Students Against Destructive Club?
Yeah. Well, when people hear the name Students Against Destructive Decisions, they kind of, it's kind of a turn-off, so we're thinking about changing the name. We haven't quite got any ideas yet, but we're trying to make it sound more appealing to the general mass of people.
Very good. Okay, I'll read the proclamation, and I'd like to present that to you. This is signed by Mayor Burns. Proclamation, Red Ribbon Week, October 26th to the 30th, 2015, whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention, education, and asset-building efforts by community members be launched to reduce the demand and availability for drugs, and whereas the Illinois Drug Education Alliance, Governor's Office, State of Illinois, Community Intervention Team, Geneva Coalition for Youth, SAD, and MAD Illinois are sponsoring the Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles and promotion of the healthy development of all citizens, young, middle, and elderly, and whereas business, government, law, enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, youth physicians, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals who demonstrate their commitment to drug-free, healthy lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and carry the spirit and message of this week into each day this year until our next Red Ribbon, October 2016. And whereas the City of Geneva further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign throughout this year until Red Ribbon 2016. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Geneva does hereby support October 26th through the 30th, 2015, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its citizens to participate in alcohol and other drug education and prevention activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Signed by Mayor Kevin Burns, this 19th day of October 2015.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments?
Want to take a vote on that?
Okay. I'm sorry. We'll need to take a vote on. Those in favor of the proclamation?
We need a motion.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Moved by Mark, seconded by Bruno. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this Okay. Item five, the omnibus agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the omnibus agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the omnibus agenda? Moved by Mark, seconded by Bruno. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, we need to read the roll on that.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Carries. Item six, approved minutes of the, okay, that was addressed under the omnibus agenda. Other items we have on the agenda would be municipal bills for payment in the amount of $5,887,271.13 recommended by the city administrator. Is there a motion to approve the municipal bills for payment?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual line items that add up to that total can be found in tonight's packet on the Geneva website.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sino. Okay, any discussion? Would you please read the roll?
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Item 11, committee of whole items of business. Item A, we have recommend resolution number 2015-107, authorizing bid waiver and contract for design of wastewater treatment plant improvements by CDM Smith in the amount not to exceed $698,413, no cents. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Sino.
Second.
Seconded by Rodecky. Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Rich, I did have one question this evening, and these were some questions that were given to, given to me by a citizen that probably knows a lot more about this than I do, but I wanted to ask this one question in regard to the anaerobic digesters, and I understand that the microorganisms in the anaerobic digesters release pee back into solution. Do we need to address this pee before it gets to the head end of the plant?
We received your questions.
Yeah.
Took them a little over an hour and a half ago.
I know. Yeah, I realize that, and the thing is, I guess I, I just wanted to let you know that there are people that are interested in this.
Absolutely, and they're excellent questions.
Yeah.
They're legitimate questions, and we're working, we want to ensure that we're giving the City Council accurate information and not off the cuff. Our consultant was not here tonight. They were not planning on being here tonight, so if it, the City Council's comfortable with it, we would like some time to answer these questions and make sure that we're answering them in a full and proper manner.
I can appreciate that, no.
The only concern we have with staff, though, is that, looking at the timeline, even though this plan is expected, has to be online by July of 2017, there's, there's about 90 days of unaccounted-for time between now and then, and that any delay as we move forward with this project risks. That has to account for weather delays, labor shortages, material shortages. We can't answer these questions when we have the information that's available, it's just we weren't able to get the information out to the City Council tonight.
No, that's fine. I think the one thing about these questions, though, is I think it will help not only myself, but the rest of the council maybe better understand some of the, some of the decisions as it relates to this project that might be of interest to them and, and help them understand as we move forward, and there are additional expenses down the road, as the project comes together.
And, and they will.
Yeah.
The questions are more related to the facility plan update, more than the design contract that's in front of the City Council tonight. We do have the information. Bob and I, it's kind of like flashbacks to our college days where we were flipping through the facility plan update, and we both realized that we were just simply not going to be able to answer all eight before tonight.
No, that's fair, and I don't think that anything should be held up this evening as a result of it, but.
We, we're confident we can get the information to you by the close of business tomorrow.
No, it doesn't even have to be that quickly. I'm, I'm just saying, though, that I think it would be good if, if, if you could pull, pull that information together and disseminate to the rest of the council, so.
Just as a suggestion, because I think those are questions that, as you noted, might be being asked by certain residents, would it be appropriate for staff to come back next Monday, read the questions, and then have the answers, so not only the council gets the information, but the audience gets the information as well?
No, that'd be fine. That'd be fine.
I just write it up as a special committee, the whole report, just as an update.
Just as an update would be great.
Can do.
Thank you.
Good. And I didn't mean to, to catch you off-guard this, this evening, and I know that I got that information to you very delight this afternoon, so.
You got the heart rate up.
No, that's great. Okay, thank you. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not on this point, but if you'd be able to stick around for just a few minutes for new business, there might be a question you might be able to answer.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, there are no further questions of Mr. Babica, then I take a word prepared to vote. Would you please read the roll?
Richard Marx.
Nay.
Jim Rodecky.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Nay.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
It passed.
Six-two.
Six-two. Okay, that brings us to item 11, presentation of ordinance, petitions, resolutions, and bid awards. I don't believe we have anything under item 12 this evening. I believe, though, that we do have maybe some discussion as it relates to new business, that there's some, something that Mr. Bruno would like to bring forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At your individual spots, Alderman Burkhardt and I had been working on a parking complaint that we've, we've had. If you can take these diagrams, let me, let me get a copy for Mary here. It came up, there are two block faces. If you go to the second page, we've had complaints that South Fourth Street, between Fulton and Franklin, it is very difficult to back out of it. These two block faces are unique in the downtown area, or seem to be unique according to my, my analysis, in that they're the older, narrower streets. There is parking two sides, and it makes it difficult to, for residents to back out into that street. All the other streets are either parked on one side, highly restricted to, to residents there, or wider streets with diagonal parking. So these two that are highlighted in orange on that second page are unique. We, there'd been an ongoing discussion with staff about, you know, if there's a way to help mitigate this, you know, we didn't want to get into complex ordinance or ambiguous ordinance rewriting. It had come up, the possibility of removing parking on one side. It had come up, the possibility of just putting signs, you know, to, no parking between signs to create these private drives, a little bigger buffer, a little better trajectory. So Alderman Burkhardt and I wanted to run this up the flagpole as to if, if there was an appetite to, to do something simple, manageable, that might address these particular concerns on these block faces. We've also got those two households, the Abel and the Mackin households, in the audience that I'd invite up to the podium if you're interested in.
Good evening. Procedure is, is you introduce yourself and give us your name and address, and then anything that you'd like to share as it relates to your concerns are welcome.
Perfect. My name is Jason Abel, 322 South Fourth Street. This is my wife Letty Abel.
Letty Abel, 322 South Fourth.
Hi.
And I'm Bill Mackin, 310 South Fourth Street, and my wife, Mary Catherine.
Great. Thanks for coming this evening.
We have just a couple of handouts to show you guys, some pictures of what we face. Unfortunately, we brought a couple of copies, but you can flip through and shares.
We do have this diagram, so we have a little, we have a pretty good visual of what you're talking about.
So for some reason, those two blocks are about the only two in downtown that don't have parking only on one side. Not exactly sure why that is, but it does make for a very tight, very dangerous area. We do have a 15-year-old and a 12-year-old. Fifteen-year-old has a learner's permit, very challenging to back out, as you can imagine, and even pull in when people park over our driveways. You'll see in the pictures, they hang over the driveway. They, there's really, I guess I don't follow that these two blocks would be the only two in town that, that don't have a one-way, one-side only, and every festival that comes to town on the weekends, they always put no parking on that side, on our side of the street. So the city obviously is aware that it's a dangerous street when there's crowds, so we would like to, you know, get some parking ease there, try to get no parking on our side of the street, on our house side of the street. You're only talking about probably five or eight spots, maybe.
Is that the west side?
Yeah.
That's the west side, yep.
If you can't pass, like, if people are parked on both sides, and you're going this way, and someone's coming this way, you either have to back up, someone's back up.
You approach the microphone.
If, if people are parked on both sides of the street, and you're going down the
street, and someone's coming towards you, one of the cars either has to back up, or pull into somebody's driveway and wait, and it's, it's very difficult.
Bill pulling our driveway, like, waved you through, and you're going, no, I lived there, you gotta come out of my driveway so I can go in it. So a couple of no parking signs is all we're asking.
Does anyone have any, any comment? Mike, did you want to share anymore?
If, if there's no more comment from the residents, or?
I'm sorry, Dr. Mack.
Yeah, actually, the other, as my wife was pointing out, in the winter, it just gets, does get more compressed with the, with the snow. We've had a little more of a problem because we cut our driveway in half with some, we used to be a double driveway, now we're a very narrow, single driveway, so it does make it a little tougher to get out than it had been, you know, before this summer.
It looks like there's no way, then, once you pull into your garages, and then about the only way out, there's no way that you can really navigate a turn, and so it's always a case, when you leave, you have to back out onto Fourth Street.
Always, yeah.
And because there's no stop sign, because there's no stop sign at Fourth and Fulton, you know, if you're backing out and someone's flying down, it's like, from the train.
When they get out of the train, man, they just fly, you know, right down.
It's because we can't see if there's, like, three SUVs, if there's one at this end of the driveway, one at this end, and then a whole bunch of cars behind. You're like, I hope nothing's coming, so.
Is there, is there a stop sign at Franklin? I can't recall. Franklin, North-South, is there, there are stop signs by the church, right?
Yep, there is. And it doesn't, you know, that's another thing, it doesn't say two-way stop underneath the stop sign on Fulton, and at a minimum, that should say two-way stop, because there's accidents there on a regular basis. Please report on that.
Okay, has there been a police department recommendation on this, Ms. McKittrick?
I know that it's been discussed between Public Works and Police Department and the Aldermen, and I believe the last discussion coming from the Police Department was to either use signage to prevent the driveways from being blocked, because that was one issue, and/or to possibly eliminate a couple of spaces as opposed to the entire block. The Police Department pointed out that, you know, whatever we do here, we need to, to understand that we will be getting the same requests across town, so downtown parking is a premium, and we just need to be very careful about eliminating it. Obviously, we want to make sure that everybody's safe, and that no one is getting hurt or backing into other cars, you know, so that is a top priority. But at the same time, we get a lot of these requests, pretty much on a weekly basis, from residents asking us to eliminate parking spaces to make it more convenient to maneuver. So that's just something that they recommended that we keep in mind, and keep the spaces that are eliminated to a minimum as opposed to the entire block. And I guess Aldermen can expand on that.
Can I respond to that for one second? Can I respond to that? Because, to me, I think you have precedent in the historic area of downtown that would say this street shouldn't have parking on it, so while you have, while you have other areas and people asking you for that same request, here you've got precedent to say, this is weird that this one little block has parking on both sides, nobody can navigate, and so it's pretty, well, it's much easier. It's not pretty easy, but it's much easier. How's that?
And, and we're.
Alderman Bruno.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are certainly cognizant of, of all the issues. You know, my, my thinking and our, and our bringing it here to discuss, my thinking hinges on these are unique block faces. I, I don't think there's anyone who doesn't appreciate the super-prime location, and, and we just, we're very sensitive to losing parking spaces, you know, near Little Traveler by the church, right off Third Street. One of my concerns and discussions with staff was that there be some definition so that it recognizes the uniqueness of the situation, so that ordinance wouldn't leave open a huge loophole that anyone who doesn't like backing out of their driveway can, can ask for signage or eliminate parking. So, you know, we, we can't decide anything here tonight, but, you know, Alderman Burkhardt and myself, we wanted to run it up the flagpole to, to take the temperature to see if there was a sense that we would consider staff reviewing ordinance or somehow implementing signs. I guess for Director Babica, I'm not sure what the, basically, I was, just the cost of signage, you know, like, do not park between these signs type things. I'm not sure if we have a number on those. Hey, I gave you that question 15 seconds ago.
The decision to enact a limited parking or no parking ban is derived and comes from the Police Department through the Police Chief, conversation with the city administrator, sent enacted upon by the City Council. Is there money within the budget, within the Public Works budget, to install signs throughout the city? Of course, there is. So it would be a question from our perspective, the simple perspective of the installation of the signs and material and staff time. Once, of course, it's enacted by the City Council, and you're the ones that have to weigh the, the cost of addressing the residents' concerns as opposed to the lack of parking across from St. James Episcopal Church. So there are a number of constraints that, that you all have to decide, and I'm gonna sit back and wait for your answer.
Thank you. Good.
No parking. Just for reference, no parking signs, about $25. The post is about another five. The installation of cost is probably about $50 worth of service time. So each sign would be about, about $100 to install.
Jason, did you, have you had a conversation with the church about your concerns at all, or have you had any dialogue with?
No, we haven't, but I don't think much comes, not, not much of it is from the church. You know, they have a parking behind them. On Sundays, maybe there's one or two cars on our side of the street. Most are on the other side of the street, where they park down Fulton or Franklin. And, you know, maybe there's even a way to put up a sign that says, no parking except Sundays before noon or something, so that the church, if they need the parking, could do that. But generally, it's not the church that's the problem, it's the people that come to town for shopping and, and that sort of thing. They can always use the, the train lot or whatever. I'm sure that that is not fully used on a regular basis.
Okay, well.
There's just one little.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I think it's important that you, you understand it's not just us, but what, what's so critical is we have parking on two sides of the street, and your everyday person coming down cannot pass. So it's impossible to pass on this street if you're just coming down the street. You either have to find somewhere to put your car. Back it all the way up, we've had people back all the way up, wait on the corner, block traffic, so it's, it's.
So you're saying when you've got vehicles parked on both sides, there's not enough width there for two cars to pass safely?
That's probably the, the thing that, that is also a concern for the community.
Okay, well, Alderman Bruno and Alderman Burkhardt?
I've spent a lot of time on this block since this issue came up a couple of months ago, and so I will back up Mr. Abel saying, I, I think the parkers there.
Mr. Abel's saying, I think the parkers there, based on when I see the most congestion, is shoppers, but I think also probably downtown employees. I mean, it is a prime spot if you work at Little Traveler or Graham's, you know, you could park there on Fourth Street, and then it could be some metro commuters, only if you're going in on a late train, though it's after 8:30, so you'd have to be on like the 917 or something like that. We figured there's probably about 12 parking spots on one side of that street.
That would be a good guess for one block face.
And so one thing we had discussed, which I liked initially, was basically from the driveway, the Abel's driveway to the north, then to, up to Franklin would be no parking, and then from the Mackin's driveway down to Fulton would be no parking. So you'd only have parking between their two driveways, kind of, but to the corner, to the driveway, be free. But that probably only leaves you with about five spots on that block because their driveways are located quite a bit of ways away, so.
Do you know how many that would be eliminating, or...
I think it would, I think we figured probably eliminating seven if we did something like that. So you'd probably only have five between their two driveways. That was Chief Maxson's estimate. I trust him better than, more than me on the car lengths. But it is definitely like, almost like kind of one-lane road when you do have that, but I will say I've also passed by, and there's not always cars on both sides of the street. There's certain days where there's six cars on the whole block, but there's certainly, like I said, every time I'm downtown, I've been driving by, and there are plenty of times when there are, and people hanging over. They have a really, especially the Mackins, have a really tight turnaround out of that driveway of theirs. Thank you.
Okay. Pardon me. Alderman Simontian?
Thank you.
And then Alderman Sino.
Mayor Protem. I have a, I'd like to reverse this and say, what if there was just parking on one side, and we went to the police and fire and said, "We want to add parking to the other side"? Would they say yes, or would they say no? Because after seeing those pictures and listening to some of this, my guess would, if it was reversed, they'd probably say, "No, we don't feel comfortable," or we'd have to have some kind of a different scenario. So if their response to that would be, on the reverse, would be, "No, we wouldn't feel comfortable putting parking on both sides," then I think that we should take a look at this and figure out a way to make it work. But it doesn't look pretty when the pictures are that way handed out, so, just a thought. Thank you.
Good. Alderman Sino?
All right. Would you guys be agreeable to Alderman Burkhardt's suggestion of the signage, just taking those, what we thought maybe seven spaces away? I would agree, I think just eliminating parking on your side...
But you're still gonna have that one-way traffic.
Right, right.
And then they're just gonna pull in front of our driveway because the other side of the road's gonna be full, they're gonna pull in front of our driveway so that one car can pass at a time. Anything will help, but it's not.
No, I would be agreeable to not allowing parking on your side of the street. I think there's several streets, like you say, in that area that there's only parking allowed on one side, so.
Alderman Radecki? What's your best guess at how many days in an average year that this is really a problem? I mean, is it...
Saturdays, most Fridays, probably 150.
I would say from like 10:00 in the morning until like maybe 3:00 in the afternoon it's really bad, because you've got the shoppers, you've got the people having lunch, you know, the people at the train, that is like a really bad, and then on the weekends.
I just wanted to clarify, because originally it said, "Well, you know, when the festivals are going," but that's not the case. It's not just Swedish days.
When the festivals are actually better for us because they put the no parking signs on our side of the street by the police.
Because they want people to...
Because they know that that's tough.
Yeah.
And then they pull them out the next day after the festivals, and it goes back.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Pull up the party patty's.
Yeah, okay, I got it. I guess my question is for the Aldermen in the ward. Have you guys talked to any of the merchants? Have they come forward, or have you had discussions with...
We haven't discussed it with them yet, but that was, that's an important point. I presume foregone that merchants would be opposed to losing that much parking, and I would be, I would be very sympathetic to that. I would probably, I would recognize that as a huge hurdle. I don't know that I would even, I could even vote for eliminating all of it. But I guess what we're doing here is just seeing if there's a consensus to have staff review this, to revise anything regarding this.
Actually, one last point, if I could, I'd feel bad if I didn't mention it. Just doing what I do, I do have to be at Delnor Centrist Page within about 30 minutes, and it hasn't come up yet where the few extra minutes that it takes navigating out of there has cost anybody their life or anything, but I, you know, I would feel bad if that happened, then I didn't say something, you know, as far as getting through there, because sometimes for what we do, particularly with the heart attacks and getting the artery open, it's, a few minutes does make a difference.
Well, I could see if you were home and you had a 6 o'clock train letting out, that would be probably a time when you might, it could take a couple of minutes to get out.
You wouldn't want to be on the table, then.
I would not want to be on the table anytime. No, that's a good point, I appreciate it. I think the best thing this evening, or we're not going to get this resolved tonight, but I'd, maybe we refer this to staff and get the two Aldermen that are directly involved with it as well, possibly trying to come up with some type of a solution that it's agreeable, acceptable to all parties, and there's going to be some give and take, I'm sure, with this, but it does appear that there's something here that needs attention, and let's see what staff and our Aldermen come up with, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can, I'm sure that the two Aldermen involved will keep you informed as this develops, okay? Okay, I think, is there any other new business? I just, I don't know if you saw the article today, I just wanted to, it was in Kane County Connects, and it was a nice article about the Kane County Cougars, and the Kane County Cougars were ranked, and Geneva was ranked as the fifth-best minor league baseball town in the United States. And that involves really several hundred communities that have minor league baseball, and, you know, we're in the ranks of communities such as Omaha, Nebraska, Des Moines, Columbus, Ohio, Durham, North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina. I think we're probably one of, we may well be the only Class A ball club that receives this recognition. So it's a real credit to the community, to Kane County Board for bringing the Cougars to Geneva, and to the franchise, to the owners of the Cougars as well, and the attendance as well this last year, drawing over 400,000 fans to Geneva. I think that's quite a tribute. And I think that over the course of the 25 years that we've had minor league baseball here in Geneva, over 10,000 fans have attended games, and that is a record for a minor league franchise, a Class A minor league franchise, so.
10 million.
10 million, yeah. 10 million fans, so a lot of people through the turnstile, so, again, something that we can use to promote Geneva, so, Tom?
Thank you, Alderman. I just wanted to pass along our condolences for Alderman Singer's passing of his sister on behalf of the City Council.
You bet.
I'll speak on all your beaves.
Yep, our thoughts and prayers go out to Ron and his family. That's where Ron is, I believe, this evening, so. With that, if we have no further business...
So moved.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Mr. Babica?
Just wanted to point out to the City Council last weekend, the art field was at the Public Works facility for their artworks display. It was one of the sidebars of that, the local high school painted five of my snowplows, and with some exceptionally quality, high-quality, we were pleasantly surprised artwork that is also on the city's webpage. If you haven't had the opportunity to take a look at them, I would strongly encourage you to. My staff is kind of elbowing each other about who gets to take the Viking plow out. If you haven't taken a look at them, it might be something you might want to take a look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Two by Simontian, seconded by Sino. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned. Thank you.